You're all ready, right? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see a full house here tonight. Marlboro High School Student Advisory Committee update. Who's here?
Tim.
Tim's here.
So, hi, everybody. I'm Tim Goleger, and I'm a sophomore here at the high school. And I'm here to talk to you guys about the spring concert. So, the spring concert occurred on the last Thursday of April, and in my opinion, it was a really huge success. After coming home from Disney on that Tuesday with eighteen new shiny awards, which we're about to hear about, the musicians were kind of elated, and I feel that we took that sense of euphoria and really integrated it into our performances. Our six performing groups at the high school, the Concert Band, Wind Ensemble, Jazz Ensemble, String Ensemble, Mixed Chorus, and Acappella Choir, all performed their rather rigorous repertoire, and the music was executed very well all around. I had mentioned this last year, but I'm going to mention it again. I take a lot of pride in the fact that I can be an active part of a department that makes a tangible difference in our community. With the amount of time and effort and really soul that we, as musicians, put into our music, into our pieces, it's almost like we're giving a piece of our heart to the audience. And I really feel that it's our job as musicians to provide the audience with that sense of catharsis and with that something that they just didn't know that they needed until it happened, and they didn't think it was necessary until it happened. And so, on a much lighter note, I'd like to thank all the members of the committee who were in attendance of the concert, and I hope that my words tonight will inspire other members of the committee and other people here to come to the concerts in the following years. And thank you so much for letting me share my thoughts on the music department this year, and I look forward to returning with new, more helpful information next year. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Anyone else speaking?
Hi, I'm Samantha Merrill, and I'm a senior. I'm here to talk about the career pathways that we had last extended learning block. So, juniors and seniors were invited to come to the library, and there was multiple different companies that showed up. And basically, they were giving tip sheets, like this one, and it said how to introduce yourself, questions that you can ask, and how to email them and get contact with companies in the future. So, this career pathways is not basically like a job fair. It's more if you want to get a job and turn it into a career, say, if you're not going to college, or if you want something to do as of right now. And it gets you ready, so if you do want just a part-time job for right now, you can do that also. And it gets you ready to know how to talk to people in the workforce and give you confidence. There's also going to be a larger one coming, and it's May 11, and students are encouraged to come. And there was over eighty students that actually went to the library to do this, and they all really liked it. And I hope next year that they're going to do it. They're just going to try and get more students to join. Thank you.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. So, Sam, just curious, how do you feel like they went about trying to let the students know? Because you were saying that they're looking to try and get more than the eighty students that were able to be there. How'd they try to get the word out?
They just told, like, over in the announcements that there's going to be a career pathways, and it was in the school calendar. And the STEM advisor went around hanging up posters, and one of the STEM committee members, I would say her title is, she's a senior, and she did a lot of promotions, so she hung up flyers as well. But there wasn't a lot of students that actually went at first, so one of the guidance counselors went around to senior and junior homerooms, asking people to come.
Do you think it would help if, like, as peers, some of the peers that were, you know, some of you guys that were there could actually go out and speak on behalf of the experience that you had to let other people know about good things?
Yeah, I think students need to get other students to do it because the way it came off, like, I didn't even know what it was for at first. It sounded to me like a job fair, but it was really more than that. It was more to, like, get your confidence built and know how to talk to professional people, stuff like that. It's not, you don't need a job off of this, and I think that's how it came off as.
It sounds like you might be able to really help to influence and have a discussion about things to do in the future to make it more successful. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi, you talking?
She's not going to go. Yeah. She was going to talk about Disney, so we're going to let them.
Oh, okay. And is Alicia here? No.
Alicia's probably still at the track meeting.
She's at a track meeting, yes.
So, we will move on. Thank you, students. High School Music Department. Mr. Rosenthal.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Nice to be here.
Nice to have you.
I want to thank Superintendent Grulick for the opportunity to share some of our experience in Florida. I'm going to be brief because I want you to hear from our students, but I do want to take a moment and thank the committee for giving us the opportunity for giving these students a life experience. There's just so many moments I can remember on the trip where these kids had that sparkle in their eye, whether it was arriving to the airport for the first time, flying on a plane, to landing in Florida, to performing on a national stage, to seeing Magic Kingdom. Just amazing, so I want to thank you all for that. I'm going to very briefly go through the results to frame it a little bit. I know that they've been out publicly, and I just want to make sure we understand what they mean, and of course, we're very proud of their results. So, the first, it was a standards-based festival, so they graded us on a superior rating, which is a ninety to a hundred, excellent; eighty to eighty-nine point nine; good; seventy to seventy-nine point nine; fair; sixty to sixty-nine point nine. And our groups fared. Mixed Chorus, and we actually have our mixed chorus plaque. So, all the groups, if you could stand up, Amanda? Yeah? All of the groups received one of these trophies and with our standard on it. So, Mixed Chorus received a superior rating. Acappella received a superior rating. String Ensemble received an excellent rating. Concert Band, an excellent rating. Wind Ensemble, superior rating. Jazz Ensemble, superior rating. So, we are very proud of those achievements. Some of the schools that we were competing against, I'll just name a few. The Faith Academy from Georgia, Saint Xavier High School out of Cincinnati, Bonnie Eagle High School from Maine, the Woodside High School in Virginia, and Denton High School from Denton, Texas. So, some of our schools that were there. They also have a category of best in class, so it's a division that we're in, and they rate our divisions. Single A is any school under six hundred students. Double A, six hundred students to twelve hundred. Triple A, twelve hundred students to sixteen hundred. And then, there's Four A, over sixteen hundred students. So, all of our groups, Acappella Choir received best in their division, which was a chamber choir division. So, out of all the groups in the division, Acappella Choir received a best in division, and we have that trophy. Kimmy, if you could stand with our Mickey. That's okay. It's the same. So, all of, yeah, go ahead. So, we got the, that's the Mickey. That's the best in class. String Ensemble received best in their double A division. Concert Band was in single A because we weren't going to compete against Wind Ensemble in double A, so we had the opportunity to go into single A. We received best in our division. Wind Ensemble received best in their division, and Jazz Ensemble received best in theirs. So, it was really pretty proud. Very cool. Then, we received the overall Mickeys. Wind Ensemble received the Bronze Mickey. We didn't bring the Bronze Mickey, but, which is the third-best concert band out of all of the divisions. Acappella Choir received the Silver Mickey, which I think looks really cool. Second-best Acappella Choir, again, out of all the divisions. And then, the Jazz Ensemble, yes, the Golden Mickey.
Golden Mickey.
I will say, the Jazz Ensemble, we've gone to Florida three different times. We've gotten three different gold Mickeys with our jazz group, so very, very proud of that. Outstanding jazz soloist was Justin Bartlett, got recognized, and the adjudicators had special recognition for Noah Ogden and Tatiana Barthold. So, very proud of our students. I know we have Mrs. Manell and Mrs. Wood here, who did so much behind the scenes. We have superl chaperones. Thank you so much for all you do. Awesome job. So, yes. I'm going to let the kids speak in their own words, so you guys can come on up.
All right, well, if you didn't know me, my name tag's over there. My name's Susan Ranbridge, if you can't read it from here. Okay. Oh, I'm a senior. This is Amanda.
Amanda McCarthy. Hi. I'm a sophomore.
Okay, so, we're both in the chorus, and I'm also in Concert Band and Wind Ensemble, so... Do you want to talk? Okay, well, so, Disney, that was my first time ever going to Disney, which was pretty incredible. I had been on a plane before, but not with everybody where I knew everybody on the plane, which is pretty cool. So, okay. My, the best memory I have from Disney would be just being able to, like, walk around the parks and be able to, like, around every corner, you see somebody you know. And it was just incredible, being able to be in a place like that with everybody who you're close with. And one of my favorite things that we did was, there was a kiddie coaster in Magic Kingdom that a group of students found, and we rode it four times in a row until we had to leave the park because it was just our favorite thing to do, and it was just incredible experience. And I'm just really proud of, like, everything that the music department did because, like, we got so close on that trip, and, like, we got up on stage and we killed it, and it just makes you so happy to be able to, like, come home with all the trophies that we did. So, it's pretty cool. Amanda, take it away.
So, I'm Amanda McCarthy, and I'm in Mixed Chorus with Susan. And I wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity because every single thing on that field trip was one of, like, my first. Going to an airport was my first time. Traveling out of New England was the first time. Going on an airplane, going to Florida, was my first time. And at first, I was really nervous about the plane, but I feel like that was one of the best moments because I was surrounded by all the lovely people on the plane. And it was nice to be there with so many people that I know because I could obviously go to somebody if I needed, like, comfort for anything. And getting to Disney and realizing that I was actually in Florida was, like, mind-blowing because it was like, I've never seen a palm tree, and it's eighty-five degrees in April. And getting to our rooms was the best because it was, like, relaxing, and it was all music-themed. Best part, honestly. But it was nice to have our teachers there because without them, none of this would be possible, and without the chaperones, none of this would be possible. And I wanted to speak about our performance because I thought that our performance was great. It was amazing. I loved being up there with Ms. McNulty and Mr. Chen on piano with Mr. Rosenthal. And after that, when we went to the parks, that was great because first time I've been on a roller coaster, which was extremely terrifying, but I got over my fears. And going home was a pretty sad part, but it was overall great to see my family again and to tell them my experience. But I'm so thankful for everything, and I'm so thankful for the music department and all the committee and everything. And, yeah, thank you so much.
Hi. I'm Heidi DePersio, and I'm a junior. And for me, of course, like, going on the rides and being with friends and stuff, that was all really special. But I really liked the award show because the setup of it was that we were at Typhoon Lagoon, one of the water parks at Disney, and we were just, like, on the beach, and it was kind of like a, like, laid-back, it was kind of like a, like, dance party at first, and then they got up onto the stage and started announcing all the groups. And so, I got to go up to represent Concert Band, accept our award, and it was just fun that, you know, like, we were all there, like, cheering on all the rest of the groups from Marlboro and stuff. And I had a fun moment where I was standing down on the beach, and they were announcing, I think it was, like, orchestra awards or something, and a girl from another school, she was like, "How many students are you here with? You guys are huge." And so, I was talking to her, and I told her, and she said that she was just there with, like, twenty-one people. They were just one orchestra. And it was cool that, like, she was just, like, really amazed at our program and how big we were and how much we had won. And, like, after the award ceremony, walking around, different schools and stuff were congratulating us and stuff because we had won so many awards. And so, it was just really fun to be able to be in that environment to, you know, it was just, like, so high energy and stuff, so I really enjoyed that.
Hi, I'm Isabel Bailey. I'm a sophomore, and I'm in Concert Band. And this trip was really important to me because my brothers went on the trip when they were in high school, and me being so much younger than them, it was really fun to finally experience the things that they had gone through. And I have been to Disney many times before with my family, but going with a bunch of friends and teachers and chaperones, it was a complete, completely new experience. And I was able to, like, experience Disney in a new way and have a bunch more fun. And also, at the beginning of the trip, I mainly stuck with my original friend group, but, like, as it went on, I was able to branch out and meet new people and, like, have more experiences and make new friends and get a lot closer with people. And overall, this trip, like, was filled with so much fun and happiness and laughter, and I made so many memories that I will never forget.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Davis, and I sing in Acappella Choir, and I play alto sax in jazz band. And I just wanted to say, this trip was just so much fun. Like, I had so much fun in the parks, of course, and hanging out with all my friends. But I think one of my favorite parts, if not my favorite part, was performing because there was just something so special about performing, like, in Disney World. I don't know if it was, like, the venue. The venues were so cool and interesting, but, like, the atmosphere was just so positive and happy. Like, nothing could go wrong because you were in Disney World. And, like, the coolest part was right before we performed, and we were warming up, and this Disney worker came in to tell us we were, like, going to go on in a couple minutes. And he told us, "Good luck. You're going to do great." And he says, "Remember, you're in Disney World." And that just made me so happy, and it, I think it made all of us feel, like, really relaxed, and we could just play confidently and just full of joy. I think overall, it was just one of the coolest places I've ever performed, and it was just such an amazing opportunity, and I'm really thankful for it.
Hi, I'm Kimmy. I'm a sophomore, and I'm in orchestra. So, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for the experience. So, I've also been to Disney many times, but this time was very special for me. So, I really enjoyed being with all of my friends, especially on the plane because usually, you're stuck next to your parents, and you don't want to do anything. But, love you. But, but this time, it was really fun because you get to experience that with people that you're really close with. Something I also enjoyed was walking around the parks with my friends. When you're younger, you really don't want to walk around the parks more than an hour. You just want to go back to your hotel and go in the pool because you're young and you're tired. But this time, I really got to enjoy the experience, and especially Epcot, because I actually went to every single town, or country, sorry. I went to every single country, and I took pictures at every single one, and I made so many memories that I'll never forget. And it was also very cool playing at the atmosphere that we were playing in, in Disney, and having everyone watch you because I don't get to watch everybody because we're practicing, so we get to miss some of the groups during the concerts. But it was really cool getting everyone watch you and judges that actually do orchestra. Sometimes, we get judges that aren't for orchestra. It's okay. But it was nice to have judges that I really could count on that gave us proper feedback, and that I really enjoyed listening to them talk to us and give us, like, feedback. Overall, I really had a really fun experience, and this is a trip to Disney that I'll never forget.
Any questions from the committee? Mrs. Hennessy, nothing? You don't want to say anything?
I'm really thrilled that they had the experience. How about that?
Okay.
No. I love, I mean, personally, I love our music program, and I think that's one of the things that I've always been really proud of, Marlboro, really working on having something for the whole child and how music really is just one more asset to these students' lives, and it gives you so many opportunities other than just strictly your academics. It's another way of, like, speaking to the world, kind of like what you were saying, Tim. So, love it. Yay.
I would also like to thank the adult chaperones, and these are familiar faces that I see years and years and years in a row, and you really do a great job. I know it's not necessarily a vacation for you. But, no, Carol, not a vacation. I think your hard work and your dedication was really borne out tonight in the testimony of these students. And it goes without saying, you know, Jonathan, Gary, and Shannon, what a, what a great job they do. So, this was amazing for you to come tonight, but shout out especially to the parents and to the chaperones.
Great, and thanks for bringing the Mickeys for us to sit.
Yes, thank you.
Sharing Mickeys.
And just so people know, they are, they're housed in the high school in the trophy case, so when people...
Big ones are in the front.
Oh, right in the front, okay. So, people from the community.
My camera light is, uh...
What's that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Seventeen total, this, just from this one trip. So, lots of Mickeys in the, in the high school to look at.
That's great.
Great. Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Awesome job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. We have no discussion, no communication. Superintendent's report.
Sure. And I know Susan has an AP Stats test tomorrow. Good luck.
Oh, good luck, Susan.
Let the students depart. Thank you. Before I begin, I just wanted to publicly thank Julie Purcell, who worked for the school committee as their secretary, support with respect to all things associated with the agenda and the minutes and so on. It was a great time to get to know her and to have someone take that role and responsibility. She's moved on to another role in the district equally as important. But I wanted to thank Donna Marshall from our office. She even has her own name tag. That was quick, Donna. Donna has volunteered to finish out the year with us in taking the minutes for these meetings, and I want to thank you very much, Donna, for being here. So, my first item is in relation to the Niask visit to Marlboro High School. The Commission on Public Secondary Schools has undergone a series of initiative changes. They want to review and revise their standards for accreditation. It has been thought by many superintendents and high school principals that they've been fairly prescriptive and not in keeping with the times. So, a new, a new person has taken over in the commission, and the goal is to implement these new changes and provide schools with the necessary time to adjust to them. These will begin, they'll be in place September 2017. So, while our visit is scheduled for 2020, it's a decennial process, that's been pushed ahead or postponed till 2021, and that will remain a permanent marker for the ten-year cycle moving forward. So, every year, every ten years afterwards up to 2021. And I spoke with Principal Kaleri. It seems like a long way off, but the self-assessment will begin 2018-2019 school year, and that's the self-study. And while I see Jonathan here, I know that Jonathan Rosenthal has agreed to do a, be a part of a visiting team for Hingham High School in September, which is awesome that we keep rejuvenating and having our staff members bring back to the high school what's going on in the accreditation world. So, I want to thank Jonathan for that as well. Jump rope for heart. I wanted to recognize the tremendous effort on the part of our PE and wellness teachers in addition to students and parents in the Marlboro community. This is a well-aligned, curricular, health-focused, and fundraising community event sponsored by the American Heart Association. It raised the following funds to help support medical and living expenses for children with heart-related diseases. And it just bears repeating. Whitcomb raised $3,739. Jarek, $8,300. Richer, $6,851. And Kane, $6,483. What a tremendous effort, every year. So, thank you, PE teachers, for organizing this. The MCAS standard-setting, the call has gone out from the Department of Education for educators who are willing to sit on a week-long standard-setting event that will take place to look at the cut scores, if you will, for the MCAS grades three to eight in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics. So, what's happening is they're determining what the cut scores would be for these specific achievement levels. Exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. So, panels of experts and educators and other stakeholders will come together to set these standards, and the department has sent out notice to educators in Massachusetts to spread the word, looking for folks to be on this committee. This has Jody Reyes written all over it. Just saying. Just saying, right? I'm sure Jody will, will apply for this. Thirteen Reasons Why. I wanted to include this because there's been a lot of buzz and concern among parents, students, and school leadership of late regarding a current Netflix series entitled Thirteen Reasons Why. I don't know if anyone else has, has seen it. It's pretty powerful. I will admit to having binge-watched it one weekend. This series is based on an adult novel written by Jay Asher and published in 2011. The story focuses on high school student, a high school student, Hannah, who commits suicide, and she leaves thirteen tapes behind explaining why she took her own life and detailing with a name on each tape of a person who wronged her. This series contains specific graphic scenes of suicide and sexual assault and rape. It also addresses cyberbullying, alcoholism, and depression. These issues are very challenging and very difficult for some families and children to deal with. We want to make sure, as a school district, that we're helping parents and students process any questions they would have in the appropriate way. I know that Sharon Buckley has watched the series and has talked extensively with the guidance and the school adjustment counselors at both the middle and the high school. I've included in the information handout some documents that might be helpful. Thirteen Reasons Why, talking points, as well as some discussion questions if, you know, students are watching this and they would like to engage in conversation with their parents. In most cases, in what I've seen and talked with parents of young children, they're watching it unbeknownst to them, and, and so, they're missing that opportunity to engage. So, we just want to put that, put this out and make sure that parents engage in the conversation. These resources are helpful, but of course, nothing would ever replace a call to a counselor if there is a concern. And our counselors have all been trained extensively, extensively this year on DBT, which is dialectical behavior training, about such topics, including suicide and self-injurious behaviors. A very, very important, very important topic. This seems like old news now, but we did have a visit from the Attorney General, Maura Healey, the other day. I want to thank everyone who supported our collective effort to educate our students about the opioid crisis and other attendant social-emotional topics. It was wonderful to see the Science Lecture Hall packed with city councilors, school committee, Marlboro Public School staff, and our community partners. And they all came out to listen to the Attorney General on May 3 as she participated in a roundtable discussion. And those folks who were on the roundtable included Mayor Vigent, Representative Gentile, Representative Greg Waugh, Police Chief Georgie, Kathy Leonard of the Substance Use Prevention Coalition, Mark Kerbel, Superintendent Grulick, and students Alec Turner and Emma Lincoln. It was a wonderful, wonderful discussion. So, we're honored not only to have received the grant, we were one of many districts who received grants. I want to say it was, correct me if I'm wrong, five, $700,000 in a settlement from CVS and Walgreens. And, and so, the settlement, the settlement targeted giving money back to school systems to help, you know, educate. And our youth opioid grant not only made it through the gates through the efforts mainly of Mark Kerbel, but she also, the Attorney General, selected to come to Marlboro, which was, I think, even more impressive that she was able to come out and talk with us. And the money for this grant... And the money for this grant will bolster our wellness curriculum, which also has an accompanying parent program, and will also be able to fund a part-time licensed drug and alcohol counselor. Very, very needed resources for us, so thank you again to all who came out. Another exciting announcement, the Masonic Teacher of the Year is Melissa Turpak, she is a second-grade teacher at Kane Elementary School, and we surprised her with balloons and flowers the other day, and she was completely taken aback. She was eating lunch with her second-grade team of teachers. We had two Masons, including Counselor Joe Delano, and we also had the mayor and Wendy Stanley, and we had a little entourage there, you know, encouraging her along the way to smile for the camera because she's not someone who likes the limelight. I wanted to also mention finalists Karen Briggs, early childhood education teacher, and Isabel Nolan, an EL teacher at Richer Elementary School. The ceremony to honor them is May 17th at 5:00 PM at the Masonic Lodge, there is no charge for this, it's an hors d'oeuvre and a good time to come together and honor some of the best in our district. I did have a couple of other quick mentions. In your packet is a list of retirees for the year, and talking with Mrs. Bowden-Hedder this afternoon, she reminded me that this is a nice thing to have, not only around budget time to look at the way we are positioning our funds for the next year, but also to recognize our staff for the good work they've done in the event that you would run into them or have reason to send them, congratulations. So, that is in your packet. I also wanted to mention one thing that Samantha talked about in the beginning of the presentation with the student advisory, and she mentioned a May 11th job fair, and this is being hosted by the MEDC, the Marlboro Economic Development Corporation. It's going to be held at the Courtyard Marriott beginning at 5:00, and we have extensively advertised this in the schools. Principal Coleri is announcing it in the morning, he is sending out an announcement soon, and we have a shuttle bus as well that will take students back and forth from the high school to the Courtyard Marriott in the event that they have no transportation. We've asked them to dress for success, use the same kind of tips that Samantha talked about, and open their minds to summer employment, employment after graduation, or perhaps career pathways. And the last thing I would like to mention is, this is Staff Appreciation Week, we are making the rounds to the schools. You'll notice at your places this evening, you have a little bit more of an extensive array than was given to the teachers, but I wanted to thank Mike Bergeron and Mary Murphy, who were with us every step of the way. Mary had her Fitbit on and was telling us how many, how many steps we collected...
10 miles over two days?
Yesterday, yesterday, the mayor and Mike and Mary and I went through Whitcomb, and through Whitcomb, and through Whitcomb, that took a long time. And the mayor and Catherine Hennessy, this morning, we, as well as Mike and Mary, went to Richer, which was, who'll be there tomorrow, all right. Jarek, Catherine also joined us along with the mayor, who brought trinkets as well from City Hall, so it was wonderful for the staff to receive these things. Tomorrow, I'm sorry, we also went to Hildreth and the Early Childhood Center today, as well as to the District Education Center, and we surprised all of our busy workers up on the top floor here of deck. Tomorrow is Marlboro High School at 8:45, if you can make it, and Kane School at 1:00, and I want to thank you all for your support. The surprise on the faces of the teachers when we disrupted, as the mayor said, every classroom in every building we visited was palpable, and it was a pleasure to thank them for all of their hard work. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, of course. I wanted to say, I thought it was really interesting because the day after the Attorney General was here, she actually was interviewed on Lawrence O'Donnell's Last Word, relative more towards healthcare issues, but she did happen to drop in some news in regards to opioid support and education, so it was kind of interesting to hear that, and so I did happen to tweet something towards her, and it was interesting because almost immediately I heard back. So, it was just, you know, thanked her for being here in Marlboro, and she was obviously really pleased to be here, and is just continuing to carry that message, you know, on a more national level, because it is something that really needs a lot of attention. So, that was great to see, and I will say, I was surprised to see in your packet about the Thirteen Reasons Why, but I'm also happy to see it in there as well, because I, as a parent, had not really heard much about this. And I will say, I kind of feel like I try to be kind of up on things, but I'm not necessarily always there, and like you said, I decided that I needed to go ahead and quickly watch this series to get myself up to speed, and it is pretty intense, and it does have a lot of things in it that are uncomfortable conversations, yet conversations that in some cases need to be have with kids that could be going through this, or actually, as some of other parents that I've had discussions with, we all need to be recognizing how different things affect each other, and how our word choices can really have a lot of meaning. So, I appreciate that you've put this out there, and I'm glad that the guidance counselors and the adjustment counselors here are prepared to have some of these discussions, because it is a tough topic for any of us to have, and some families just are not necessarily comfortable to have the discussion, but for others to be prepared so that we can keep our community as safe as possible is a good thing, so thank you.
We also communicated with Principal Daniels and Coleri about messaging this in their parent newsletters, and I have the exact same message on my updated superintendent page. We figure we're trying to hit as many of the outlets as we can, even if it's a redundant message, to make sure that the word gets out there, because the last thing you want to do is have, you know, your child watch it and have questions and not have a touch point with you about it, so that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, I was going to ask if we could have it on the website, so it looks like parents can reference it there. I'm amazed at how much money the students raise at Jump Rope for Heart. Like, I know they do it every year, and I always participated when my kids were younger. That's a lot of money.
It's always amazing seeing the amount of money.
Really?
Amazing.
It's great, great. Mrs. Matthews.
Maureen, on the Niasq, in the past, Maureen, on the last year of...
A cycle.
The cycle. So, now, we're going to be...
I think they've shifted everything around in terms of when this is moving forward with implementation of the new standards. You're absolutely right, we were always one of the last...
Last, and the old standards, so they were nine-year-old standards, basically.
Right, I was as surprised as you when I got the letter saying 2021, so they must have really shaken the whole thing.
So, you think there's a new person...
There is, George Edwards is the new Janet's...
Yeah.
Allison. Allison, Janet Allison, yes.
Oh, yeah, who can forget Janet?
Many, many superintendents that I know of and others that spoke publicly at the conference in the summer talked about, you know, we already have a very robust accountability method through the Department of Education, isn't this redundant? Why are things so prescriptive? And the example they always use is, advisory is the only way to create a relationship with a teacher in your building other than your counselor. So, we were almost all, you know, forced to have advisory, and some said, no, this doesn't work, so they've loosened up on some of the prescriptive nature of how you get past that gate, and I've also heard, yet to find out for sure, that the self-study will not be as inclusive with every single staff member dedicated for a whole year doing it, but again, more to follow. I remember Pat, Kylie and I co-led that self-study several years ago now, what, almost 12 years now, and that was, no, not 12, 10, 10, it seems like 12. It was such an immense effort, every single staff meeting, every single, you know, PD, it was so incredible, that that was another complaint on the part of superintendents that other directives and other initiatives were put way on the back burner for that to be done. So, I think they've listened to some of the comments and feedback, and I'm very eager to find out how this will turn out, but...
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Murphy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to update you a little bit on a few of the summer offerings. In addition to many courses, we're going to be offering a couple of other courses. First of all, we've been working with Research for Better Teaching to offer a summer course on data coaching, unleashing the power of collaborative inquiry. We've had two cohorts successfully complete this course in the past, but we have not offered it in the last few years. Staff that were trained were able to use this training to analyze student data and lead discussions in departments and PLCs. We'd like to have trained staff on a district-wide data team, and that will help us focus the work of other district initiatives such as MTSS, and the creation of a district literacy team and a district literacy plan that we know need to come out of the data. We also have a couple of offerings with the DSAC grant, which is allowing us to target our Level 3 schools. Richer School, which is our only Level 3 Title 1 school, and Marlboro High School, and because Richer School is a Title 1 school, they have a little extra trainings that are available and money in the grant, and so they're going to use that to have a specific training on leading high-impact teacher teams, four steps to increase student achievement. This training will focus on refining the grade-level PLCs that are in place, and the focus of what happens every week in those PLC terms. It's funny, this morning, when we were touring Richer School, the third grade was in PLCs, but they were getting data from students, and we saw art and music in the classrooms, active, and students engaged on learning the whole time, so it's, it was an exciting model to see. We will also, 20 staff members from Richer and Marlboro High School will be offered a two-day course engaging all learners through UDL Design. This course will take place on August 24th and 25th at Marlboro High School. This is something that the principals asked for us to offer, so we're very excited at this opportunity. Elementary changes. As you know, over the last few years, there have been changes to the designation of some students' elementary schools due to overcrowding issues. We expect that this process will continue until the elementary building project is completed. My recommendation is that the beginning of next fall, children entering kindergarten through grade 4 and living at 450 through 460 Boston Post Road will be assigned to the Richer Elementary School. This will allow for a single complex to be moved and will address some of the overcrowding issues at Jarek. At your seats is a letter that will be sent to families tomorrow morning, as well as school message will be sent out as well, notifying them that the letter has been mailed, and that it's very important, and it will be talking about their school assignment for next year. The kindergarten, to connect to this, the kindergarten numbers as of May 4th, Jarek was at 114 enrollment, Richer at 100, and Kane at 94. So, and those numbers do increase, include the five students that would be moving from Jarek to Richer with that move in the school assignment. Based on the prior years, we expect an additional 50 to 70 registrations before schools begin in the fall. I also included an updated projection that includes these changes to class sizes with all three buildings. There is need to note, because that was based on March 1st, there is one change that has been significant in the numbers between the change and the March 1st data, and that is that grade 2 at Richer, which is now currently at around 120 students, which would make class size for that grade at Richer at 24, which is consistent with other grades in the other two buildings, but it is higher than is on the chart that I included.
I have a few concerns.
Yep.
One being, the fourth graders that you're now moving to Richer. Not crazy about it, I don't know how those students and parents are going to feel. Is there a way we can accommodate them if, it looks like it's eight students, if I look at the thing the right way? That's one of my concerns.
There are eight students in grade 3, and there are eight students in grade 4, and we looked at that right away, but that would put at least one of those grades over 26 students in a classroom, and there was no way, even we actually looked at if we could add additional teaching staff to address, but it was felt that with 26, a minimum of at least 26 students and teaching staff that would be needed in those classrooms, physically, that many students could not fit into the classroom, and Jarek is out of room. They don't have a closet, they are using closets as instructional space, they're using underneath stairwells, there's just no way that we could avoid it, and this was the only option. We actually looked at all the bus routes so that we could have a single bus stop and not have to try to put forward a bunch of different neighborhoods, and also not to move students that we just moved lines a couple of years ago.
My other concern?
Mm-hmm.
The letter is very assuming that we're getting a new school. I know that it's looking like it's in that direction, but it has not been approved yet, and it makes me very nervous to say we're getting a new school.
We're getting one of three options, I'm looking at Tom, yes, right.
We will get more space.
We will get more space. Two of the options are a brand-new school, and one is a...
Right, I...
Right, I know, right.
The, I think that one of the points is, in looking at the plan moving forward, is that with this one move, if the projections continue the way we are, Richer School would have the ability to continue for the next few years, and Jarek would as well. So, it solves the space problem in multiple, in more than one building without overloading Kane or making that switch, it was the only option. We could revise the letter so that it, you know, it says something slightly different.
So, the recommended change would be a space option?
We literally just got this, so it's like I haven't had a chance to wordsmith it, but, I mean, maybe if it could be, I don't know if the other members have a suggestion, but I don't know, I just thought it was very assuming, and it's kind of mentioned a couple times, like, that's my only hesitation. But if it could be tweaked, you know, that there will be some changes coming forward, potentially, potentially a new school, but not saying, you know, you know, at the end of the project, we will open a wonderful new school. We hope.
Right. Soften the letter.
My case. Mr. Walter.
Thank you. Mary, to the extent that the students who are being, potentially being moved, 450 through 460 Boston Post Road, to the extent these students need services such as EL, special ed, adjustment counseling, do we envision Richer having the capacity to accommodate these students, or will some staff have to follow the students? In other words, I don't want to solve one problem, overcrowding, but create two or three others at Richer specific as a result.
So, any student that has a, is enrolled in a specialized program will not be moved so that they have to remain. So, there may be some students at that address that could remain at Jarek because they are participating in the pathways program. There may be some students at that address that are attending Kane School for some programming. Those students will remain in that. Based on that, I think that the EL department has already looked to see what the impact is, because we have an EL teacher that's going to be hired, and we have not determined what building that's going to be at, and we've already said that if we need to look at an additional school adjustment counselor, because Richer School is the only school that only has one right now, then that would be something we would be looking at. be something we would be looking at moving forward. Yeah, Mike?
Mrs. Matthews. Did you want to say something?
Just to respond to Mr. Walters, also, just so you understand, the school committee, in their FY18 budget, we do have a salary reserve line of $210,000 for unforeseen expenses. So if we did need to hire an additional FTE, we do have the ability to do that. So this is within budget.
Okay. Because I'm just imagining that will be one of the concerns raised by parents, and rightly so, as to the services provided. So I think that may put some concerns at ease. Thank you.
Yeah, and after what happened with the folks living in the hotel, that put a lot of strain on services at Richer, and we don't want to do that again.
No, absolutely not. In addressing Mrs. Ryan's regards to the letter and the discussion of a new school, I'm not even sure if it's important to address that as much as the overcrowding issue, because whether they're in kindergarten or fourth grade, they're not going to be affected now by that change, because we're at least five, six years out. So it almost, as much as we're putting the stress on a new building in this letter, it's not, that's not going to affect them. It's making sure their child's in a better space, less, you know, not overcrowded space. The second piece, which Mr. Walter just said to me, and I think Denise also said, was moving a fourth grader, and then there would be lots of transitions. My child was one of those who went to three schools in three years in this district when JARIC reopened. And so he did, you know, one year at Kane, one year at JARIC, and one year at Whitcomb. So, again, too, when a new, when a new building opens, there's going to be kids who are going to be experiencing that exact same thing. It's not pleasant. I think the concern probably that was looked at was keeping families together, and that's the most important thing, I think. So it's not an easy thing to do. Transition for some is easier than for others, but, so. I just, we can wordsmith this. I agree that we haven't had the time to look at it either, but I think, I'd like to see smaller classrooms without a strain. But I think even the mayor will say after walking through JARIC today that there's not many places that these kids can go anymore, now that he's joined us. But, you know, where are we going to put them? We can't put them anywhere else.
And just to recognize that the building project that we're involved in, the three options that the MSBA has been allowed us to study, all three options are going to require a redistricting plan, regardless of which option is moved forward. We're going to have to do that study and eventually get there. So, in effect, we have to prepare to get to that point, which is going to take a couple of years. And we think by making a small move like this will get us to that point where we can get to the larger redistricting plan.
I think that, yeah, Marley, you want to?
I will address, I am the one that really pushed for that sentence of framing it in a larger context. And that was important for me, because I didn't want people thinking this was just, you know, one move that was going to solve everything, but that there may be some discomfort, there will be, to get us to this promised land, whatever that looks like. And so that was the beginning to provide the rationale and the context for something that's coming down the road. But we're happy to look at the letter in the morning and switch it up.
Hi, do you want?
So, a question that I do have, because Richer has a couple different things going on over there, I think to the point that Mr. Walter was bringing up in regards to the Level III school.
Mm-hmm.
A principal stepping in who has taken something on kind of, you know, mid-year, and is moving forward. I definitely want to make sure, and I thank you, Mr. Bergeron, for pointing out, that we do have money to support should we need for staffing. I know that when we were kind of at different points, having conversations about potential solutions, that's something that very much concerns me, that we make sure that it's very well-understood that they have the support of getting the staff that's needed to address, whether it be class sizes or any kind of EL needs, because they're already under a certain amount of stress anyway of trying to take care of success of that rating and such. The other thing, I do wonder, we do have a huge amount of growth on that side of town. Not something that I can say from knowing real numbers, because that's not my area of expertise. But I'm really just curious as to what are the numbers that we're looking at? Are those complexes that have been built or are in the process of being built? Are they full, or are they? I just don't know where we sit, and I'm looking over at you, the mayor, to understand, do you know those numbers by chances to the complexes and how full they are at this point? I don't, I don't know.
No talking till I change my chair.
Okay. I'll give you a chair and make a definitive answer. No, I just... Way to go. I just, and I...
Now that I'm at the big-boy table.
Now that you're at the big-boy table, and I'm sorry to kind of put you on the spot about that, and you may not know, but, well, there's some complexes that were built right behind, yeah, right behind Dunkin' Donuts and up by Lake Williams, and then there are some apartment and condo areas that are on forest and such. And I just don't know about the population and how many of those areas are filled yet. And that does put a concern for me, for future students that would be heading into Richer. So while we're trying to take care of a situation that is happening at JARIC right now, which you and I saw, we were walking the hallways today and saw, you know, the situation which needs to be addressed, I just, again, I don't want to put a Band-Aid on a situation where we have more students that are going to be coming in from some of these complexes that have been built, and I just don't understand what that, you know, that looks like, and I don't know if you know about that.
So that's a six-volume encyclopedia that you just threw out there, so let me try to decipher a couple.
Yeah.
First of all, it is a Band-Aid, is what we're doing. We're going to get through the next few years and get a new school built so we have enough space and appropriate classrooms for the students. As far as the complexes that are being built, Avalon Bay actually has, I think, 11 students in the entire complex. Very different than what we have on the other side of town, where the rents are a little bit lower, same-sized complex. I believe there's 148 or 98 there, but I mean it substantially more. Avalon's a different type of complex.
Okay.
We're anticipating a few more, but not too many more in Talia, because it is a 40B, but it's still up there in the price range. So we're finding that the higher-priced apartments are not bringing in the students into our schools.
Okay.
That's why the other thing that I did three months ago now is to ask the council to support a shot-term moratorium. Let's take a look at the housing, to take a look at how it's affecting our schools, our public safety, our 40B issues. So we're doing that now. We're hoping to open up this picking again probably in the next two to three months. But we wanted to find out what would be right for the city of Marlboro. Not necessarily put housing up just to get it filled. We have, and I don't think I've told this committee, I've had 15, 16 different developers calling me about housing complexes, totaling somewhere around 3,000 units.
Yeah.
So that's why, in reaction to that, I said, we've got to put a hold on things, take a look, see what we are looking to do in the city. So we're doing that in the next few months. Yes, we do have a Band-Aid in place. The complexes that are out there now probably aren't going to send us a lot of students, but we won't know until their full Talia is, I believe, 60% full.
Okay.
A lot of out-of-state people coming in, and it's a lot of the people that are working in the office park, and Avalon was full in advance of where they expected. It's been full for a while now.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for putting the moratorium on so you could get a handle.
Shot-term, take a look.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. And I guess that that's just, you know, I just don't want to see our numbers rise, and then we're moving other children over and having a very similar issue in Richer as well. So thank you for that information. The other thing that I was wondering, with the students that would be moving over, do we have an understanding about these students and whether they will be needing after-school programming, and if our after-school programming that we have set at Richer is able to meet their needs?
The after-school program across the city, I think, still has openings. They're only averaging about 40 students at most of the elementaries. I had an update for them recently, because we submitted it to the MSBA as part of our package proposal. So I wouldn't see that as being a barrier, but we are, just, I want to echo what Mary said, we are providing a single bus to make sure that they have a straight ride with no delays to get from point A to point B, to make sure that this is as smooth as possible. So, and that one bus in that elementary route has one stop, that's it. So they're not going to be going anywhere else in the city. They're going to go right to the address, then right to the school.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
I think it's very important for every district to update its curriculum yearly, periodically. So with the advent of updated math, science, and literacy standards that are all being updated, our curriculum has to be updated as well. So I gave you a framework for a proposal. I received proposals from Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, ELA, Guidance, and so this summer, I anticipate about 50 staff members will be working to revise and update our curriculum, which is the scope and sequence, benchmarks, curriculum map should be updated as well, common assessments should be developed. And I think it's very important for our website to be updated to include for our parents all the information from pre-K all the way through grade 12. Right now, well, right now, we can't access any of the curriculum, even though the links from the old website will be updated in the new website soon, and Mary's going to be working to update the elementary. The middle school and high school should be updated as well. One of the things I noticed, looking at websites in districts surrounding us and across the state, a lot of people updated their websites this year, and you can't find curriculum work on any of these websites. For some reason, it's off the radar screen, but it should be on ours. Anyway, our curriculum work should be done this summer, and I would say the cost will be anywhere between $18,000, $20,000. In Guidance, Guidance is a little bit different, and in Guidance, they will develop a scope and sequence using the NAVIANS program, and I anticipate there'll be four lessons taught per grade level, starting with grade five. And the scholarships that we have will be uploaded to NAVIANS. That'll be one-stop shopping for parents, so that'll be good for them. Also, there'll be one or two people working to redesign the Guidance website. That's it. Any questions?
Mrs. Hennessy.
Thanks. I'm curious, with kind of the change of how we were delivering, you know, STEM with STEAM at Whitcomb, will there be an area where Art is looking for more integration within to the curriculum and how it's going to be affecting all of the different mappings?
So, I heard you. Could you say it again, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. So with the change from STEM to STEAM at Whitcomb, and Art needing to have a little bit more integration into the curriculum across all of the different areas, will that be something that will then be written into the plans?
Oh, yes.
Across?
Yeah, I expect that.
All of these different areas?
One of the things that Jody, and Jody, Rayos, and Kathy Richoff had presented, something that came from the state, which was to show how the literacy standards, the math standards, the art standards, and the engineering standards are interconnected. So there's a beautiful graph that we could use that simplifies everything. Just saw that today. Instead of having pages and pages of each standard in each subject area, have them all connected in one design. State did a great job. That'll be helpful to us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Nope?
Thank you.
Thank you, Marley. Acceptance of minutes. Minutes of April 11th?
Motion to approve with a slight change. Mrs. Hennessy's name was incorrectly spelled in one place.
And number 10.
Number 10.
Number 10, okay. Motion made and seconded to approve with the correction of Mrs. Hennessy's name. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Oppose? Carries?
Yeah.
Public participation? Public participation? Anyone wishing?
You're here. You can participate tonight.
Mrs. Minell! In the flesh! Seeing none? Action items: Marlboro Elementary School project grade configuration.
Thank you. The district administration recommends that the fifth grade be moved from the first Lieutenant Charles W. Whitcomb School to the elementary level, but as we have discussed already, space constraints certainly don't make this feasible at the present time. Marlboro is in the feasibility study with the MSBA to evaluate options for a school project. Two out of three of these options would have the configuration with fifth grade back into the elementary schools. On May 2nd, the Marlboro School Building Committee voted to recommend further analysis of this fourth elementary school option, and to recommend that school committee reconfigure Marlboro Public Schools if this option emerges as your final recommendation. Keep in mind that this does not reconfigure the schools. Additional votes, lots of redistricting would be later required in this process as administered by the MSBA. So the status is that to move forward with the proposed configuration with fifth grade in the elementary grades, we would require a vote and approval of the school committee, and it is the recommendation that the school committee support further study of the fourth elementary school option and support reconfiguring Marlboro Public Schools to K5, 68, and 912. And we have this evening with us Tom Gatzunas from Dedalus, who's also a father of past students in this, and one about to graduate.
One about to graduate. Last one.
So he is here to answer any questions. He is our OPM, our owner's project manager. It's been, I want to say, a complete pleasure to work with him as well as with Limerick and Pagano. So we'd open this up to any questions that you would have.
Other questions? No questions? Catherine is teetering on the edge of a question.
Because everybody wants a pass.
Mr. Gatzunas, can you go up to the mic, please? Thank you.
So can you fill us in a little bit in regards to the further analysis that would be done to help us get to the point of understanding about the K to 5, you know, configuration with that fourth elementary, and, you know, approving it here? What's, what happens then? What's our process?
Sure. So part of the...
Do you see a green light?
Okay. So part of the process that the MSBA requires is that before we can actually really look at a different configuration than what is presently in the system, which is obviously the K4, a vote of the school committee is required to look at that K5 configuration, if that's the direction that the district wants to go in. So, you know, the MSBA does not want a building committee to be doing their own thing without the support of the school committee. So that's what this is all about. It's really just setting that kind of checkbox and setting the stage so that, yes, we can actively pursue all of the pluses and minuses of making that change and looking at what it would mean for either a renovated school... it would mean for either a renovated school or new school. And it's been mentioned earlier, the decision has not been made yet. We have to go through the various iterations and build the case. But I will say that it is leaning towards, when you look at the math and look at the sheer volume and number of students, that within the three buildings that we currently have for elementary schools, we cannot fit all of the students unless we build a thousand-plus elementary school, which is much larger than any of the buildings that we have.
And I guess that that was one of the reasons I was asking the question, because years ago, we had looked at making changes with moving the eighth grade down and trying to look at the fifth grade in an elementary setting. And we simply did not have the space to even remotely consider that previously. So talking about it now, again, to me, seems kind of like a bit of a pipe dream of talking about, we'd love to have the fifth graders down there, but once again, we don't even have the space to hold the kids that we do have from K to four. So hence why I'm, I guess, you know, scratching my head a little bit. It seems a little counterintuitive to say, yes, let's do it. We have no way of fitting any of those children into the space. And even as you said, even if we went to build a fourth building, it'd have to be a pretty large building to make that happen, too.
No.
They'd have to redistrict.
A fourth school allows us to keep the numbers consistent with where we are. If we don't build a fourth school, and we renovate the Richard and make it a huge school to accommodate, then we're at a thousand-plus.
Which then brings a whole nother host of issues as well.
That's right.
Right, so that's...
But the fourth school does accommodate the K through five with the six hundred numbers.
Right, but could, could potentially change the dynamic of the communities, if you will, if in the end it's looking at keeping it as three schools and one just becomes a very, very large school?
If I could, if I could just interject a little bit, the other thing is, if we decided to stay with the three schools, and we were going to move the kids down, we had to build this nine seventy-five, ten...
Ten sixty.
Ten sixty.
Ten sixty.
If we have to build a school that size, there's real doubt whether they could fit it in the Richard location because of how tight it is currently. So that, that becomes a new issue.
Right.
That we don't even know if we can get a school that big on that site. There's real doubt to that.
Right.
It would be a multi-multi-level.
Yeah, and I would not support that.
So my question is, is if we moved forward on trying to support the analysis towards having the fifth graders there, and we then see, as things are progressing, that for some reason, a fourth school is not looking like it's in the cards, and the massive, you know, three-school, if you will, configuration is what's kind of starting to come to play, do we have an opportunity of having more discussion with you all? Because maybe some of us have a concern of having two schools the size they are and one massive-sized school.
That's, I think, the point.
I just want to understand.
I would say that we're at the beginning of the discussion point. So there will be many more discussions on this topic as we move forward. Not only grade configuration, but building location, building, number of buildings. This is the start of a continued discussion process.
But I also don't want to mislead anyone. For the most part, it's, it's, we do the proposals, but it's not our final decision. Final decision's made by the SBA. They tell us which one of the options we're going to do. So if it comes back and it's an option we're not happy with, then we decide if we're moving forward or we're going to scrap the whole thing. But they make the final decision, and we work around it. We're doing three proposals to them, which will include, you know, moving them down or not moving them down based on what you say.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess to go back a step, what, I guess, you're, what you're asking, or what's being asked of us now is because the initial proposal was to keep the K-4 under, initial, when you did the MSBA request, sorry, it was, it was to do, it was still a K-4 proposal, correct?
When we did our statement of interest, it was simply to get in the pipeline to look at Richard. We weren't even talking about program at that point. What we were doing is making a case saying that the building...
And so the original, when it came back at six seventy-five enrollment, was still K-4, again, because that's what the building was.
Right, so the, under the, there's three options that we're looking at. One is keeping it a K-4.
Right.
At six hundred and seventy-five. One is going K-5, three schools, at one thousand and sixty, and then building the fourth school at six hundred and ten.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That's clear, yeah. That makes it much clearer. So I think that's, yeah, yes. Right, so, got it.
I think, from speaking with some other committee members, I think we're all proponents of eventually bringing, hopefully, the fifth grade back to the elementary level. So I will heartily move to support further study of the fourth elementary school option and support reconfiguring MPS schools to K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
FY18 school choice. First someone needs to make a motion to remove it from the table?
Certainly, she put it in the agenda, so we'll discuss if it's on.
Shouldn't say table, I'm on that one.
No, you have to remove it from the table, don't you?
Not if it's on the agenda. Table to the next regular schedule.
Okay, never mind. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. As you know, by June 1st, the school committee must vote, and we need to let DESI know whether or not we will accept school choice pupils for the upcoming school year. We had entered into some discussion at our last meeting around the fact that we had traditionally said no, in lieu of all of the conversation we've had recently about space. It seems counterintuitive to suggest otherwise. In talking more with Mr. Bergeron about possibilities, I now see that we could look at ninth grade only and declare exactly how many we would like to put up for school choice. And I was entertaining a thought of, at your pleasure, five to ten or so in the ninth grade at the high school due to the fact that we have an outstanding music program, outstanding arts, robust STEM program. We're about to enter into another phase with our programs that we're building around advanced manufacturing and our early college initiative. We have many positive things at the Marlboro High School, and notwithstanding the fact that we would serve to gain financially from this, I feel that competitively it would put us in a wonderful position in surrounding communities. And we did include in the packet some requested information, and this is just a snapshot of the school choice pupils by sending district. And I know there was a question earlier this evening, and Mr. Bergeron can talk about the variance here. We're looking at, we're used to, we're expecting to see 5,000 times the students, but it's not quite that simple or clean, so...
Yeah, can you walk us through that?
Sure, absolutely. So the first thing is going to be that the two schools at the bottom, MAVA and TECA, don't get 5,000. They actually get 6,700 per pupil because they are online schools. These were created after school choice, much, I mean, they were only created a few years ago, and since added to the school choice law. Then what you see in the difference between the 5,000 and what is there is the special education increment. So when you have a student who receives any services through an IEP, the district who takes a student in, then fills out a form, sends it to DESI, DESI then gives credit to the district who's received the student in the form of a higher tuition. It's based off the same exact formulas that Circuit Breaker's based off. So it's, it's very much the same exact form. And what you do is you literally just put down the grid of services a student receives, and then we get a reimbursement based on that amount. It's not one-for-one, because what DESI does is, they calculate the averages for the costs and then create formulas to, so we don't, the perfect example is this, if we had a one-to-one student and had a para all day with them, we wouldn't submit the cost of the para. What we would submit is that there's a one-to-one para, DESI would tell us how much reimbursement we get for that based on all the costs of all the districts. So it's a reimbursement formula. That's why you see a difference between 5,000 and sometimes more than that.
So the assumption is that some of these students that are going to some of these other schools are special ed students, so we then get charged by that school?
Correct.
And then we get reimbursed a year out?
We don't get reimbursed at all. All we do is expend. The district who is performing the service gets a higher level. They get 5,000 plus the reimbursement for the services.
That we pay for?
Yes.
Okay. So where does the Circuit Breaker come in? I'm sorry.
They use the same formulas for Circuit Breaker.
Oh, it's just the same formula?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
The same data.
Mrs. Matthews?
Can you explain how we have partial?
Absolutely. So what happens during the, if in the middle of the school year, a student then, as there's an open seat, and a student moves into that district, they use partial payments for the year. So that's why you could see something as strange as two and a half students. There aren't really two and a half students. There's two students, and one student decided to move into that district or choice in at half the year.
Well, and then the other question is, I know if, in families where parents may live in two communities and a child has a choice, are they considered under choice or are they considered residents when they attend a school?
There's a specific piece of the school choice law that deals with students who are in separated homes and how you're supposed to claim for that. I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, but both districts get charged. Depending, it depends on the residency, though. So if the student only resides in one of the communities, then the student, that community would be the one that gets charged.
Oh, okay. But if they do have a full 50% split, so they're betting their head two and a half days per community?
Yes.
If the students, so presumably the student could choose which one because they have split, but that's not a choice situation, that's just a residency situation.
It's, both laws are being affected. Because you're using a school choice program to go to another municipality to their program, and all we're trying to do is just make sure we calculate the cost correctly. So we would have to find out, if we knew the student had dual residency, we would then reach out to make sure that DESI is appropriately charging both communities.
And then one other question, I did ask this earlier, and I don't know if Mr. Bergeron was able to get it, was how many we were anticipating for ninth grade this year? Under our own enrollment? And if you don't have that answer, that's fine, that was my bad, I meant to...
There's always the Assabette question.
Well, that, that's the thing, so, and I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying five to 10, I'd want a specific number from your suggestion.
Right.
Number one, and number...
I was just giving you a range.
No, I know, I know.
I think you have to.
I believe you do, too. But I also, I mean, looking, if you take out the 10 that are at the online schools, and I don't, I have a difficult time saying we lose children to Hudson in the sense of it's a neighboring town, and there's a reason, there's many reasons why they go to a neighboring town, just like they go to Assabette. And I don't know necessarily if 63 kids would come here if given the choice?
No.
From Hudson? So we're only talking about 15 kids that leave our district under choice? Not the 63 that left this year to go to Hudson? I'm saying adding the rest of them up.
Oh, aside from Hudson, you mean?
Aside from Hudson.
Yeah.
I don't think is that huge a number for, under choice. We lose more to Assabette than we do to Hudson.
Sure, but that's a different form of education, I mean...
Hudson's a different form of education than Marlboro, too. In their high school, their model is very different than ours. So, again, they have choice and they, they open that up at all grades in high school.
Because they have the space.
Right. And if we're talking space, yes, we do have space, and I don't think we still clarified completely our ninth grade offerings, so...
Teeming or non-teeming is your point.
Yeah, so unfortunately, right now, I'm not comfortable opening, that's my own thing, so I would vote against it right now, so...
Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, last week, I think you indicated that if our, if we opened up school choice and we were oversubscribed, there's a random lottery to determine who enrolls. Flipping that, flipping that around, let's say for sake of discussion, we have 10 spaces that we open up. Let's say we're undersubscribed. Do we have any discretion as to letting those students in? Or just by the very nature, let's say we get nine students applying for the 10 spots, do we automatically have to admit those nine, or can we?
You can't ask any educational or any, you can't ask any questions about their background, educational history, or what their services they provide. You have to simply take the students that apply for the slots.
Can't do with the vocational schools.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. And that's another reason why I would vote against it.
Well, that, that...
Well, but that's, we're not going to change that system in this conversation.
No, no, no. But it's, it's a concern when we have the demographics and the challenges that we have with Marlboro's kids and making sure we do right by them. I'm just not at the point where I feel like we need to be, be doing this, when we've still got some things to get our house. At the risk of making it seem like maybe the financial tail is wagging the dog, are you able to quantify what we would expect if we, say, open up 10 spots? What we, what we could reasonably, a ballpark figure, what we would reasonably get?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
But then the problem is, I don't know what would happen if any of the students would present any IEPs or services.
Right.
The other thing is, if they did, and we don't currently have that budget, we have to add the expense before we get reimbursed.
So, given our budgetary situation, I'm very hesitant. Let me ask you as well, Mike, legally, could we, let's say we opened it up for the next school year, legally can we then change our minds?
Yeah, it's every year.
You have to vote every year.
For those five kids?
Not for the kids, but you can send it back.
Right, that's what, that's what my concern is.
Once they come in, they're ours.
Right, right. They're ours. So I don't think I'm voting in favor of this.
And I have one more question regarding, actually, Mr. Walter just brought that up. So a child has an IEP and has services. Then something happens that causes them to go out of district now. Whose responsibility is that? Ours or their home district?
It's our responsibility, and then the costs get reimbursed through the formula. So what would happen is, we would end up paying the tuition for the out-of-district placement, and then we would submit the costs on the Circuit Breaker, you know, reimbursement.
No, yeah, it's a minefield, sorry. Okay, thank you.
It's, it's very, that doesn't happen very often, just so you know.
Yeah, it becomes quite of a non-starter when you start considering so much of the wonderful things that we have here, yet it, it could bring a plethora of other issues. I think also, to the point you started to head towards, Mrs. Matthews, relative to, we still don't have answers about what's happening at the high school next year, whether it be the changes that are around the, the schedule situation, teeming, whether there's going to be some pathways set forward or not. And although I think it would be wonderful opportunity for some students to come here and to experience some of the things that you pointed out, I think some of the pitfalls, if you will, that might happen are a little bit too unknown, that it does make me uncomfortable at this point to, to look at that at this juncture. Is it something to consider down the road? Yes, maybe, but I'm, I'm not sure I'm there right now, and I think there's too many questions.
By June 1st?
By June 1st. Yeah.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to not offer school choice for the school year, 2017, 2018.
Motion's been made in, seconded to not elect to take... Motion's been made in, seconded to not elect to take school choice. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Actually, I'm opposed to that. The policy is to be approved by the committee, school calendar policy 7.2.
So thank you very much. We had brought forward for first reads these three policies, the school year, school calendar being the first policy, 7.200. As you will know by the red line that had been sent over, I think during the first read situation, there were some large changes. And I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the amended policy.
Motion made and seconded to approve, school calendar policy 7.2 as amended. Any discussion? Ms. Matthews.
The only discussion that I had, and actually, Mr. Walter and I talked about it, was on the legal references was, I'm not sure you're citing, you're not even citing the mass general law that you're using in it. The 603 CMR 2702 is really 2700 with five below it. So, and I didn't look up the rest of them, but I just, that one stuck out because that's what draws on the definitions of an underschool year requirements. So it's just, whatever you're, what's cited down there, I just double check it.
So maybe we can just afterwards double check with what you have?
Yeah. That's the only, that's the only thing.
And make those reference changes?
Yeah. That's all.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Did we figure out the citation number, the, the policy number?
Yeah. She had it. It just...
It was correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Brogan.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Marking periods policy 7.25.
So, thank you very much. As said before, this was a split off from the previous school calendar policy. So this is a new portion pulled out. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with policy number 7.250 marking periods.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Private school policy 8.045.
Thank you very much. So again, this is a new policy that was being moved forward after, I think the superintendent actually had found the situation where this seemed to get onto our books with a new school potentially coming into the area. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with policy 8.045, private school approval.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to abstain from this vote, and if I may take just a moment, Mr. Mayor. I can appreciate the need to bring this policy before the committee because it's apparently required or something akin to it is required under Chapter 76, Section 1. But I think that statute is absolutely horrendous. I have a philosophical and a practical objection to the statute. I don't see where this is our bailiwick, to be approving or disapproving schools over which we have no governance or no monitoring authority. And philosophically, we have armies of legislators and bureaucrats at the federal and state level who want to tell us everything about what books to use in our classroom, what to feed our kids in school, and what, how to discipline our kids in school. But all of a sudden, when it comes to private schools here in Massachusetts, Beacon Hill has seen fit to essentially do their best Pontius Pilate and wash their hands. It's doubly perplexing when you realize that DESI does have approval or disapproval power over special education private schools, but for some reason, they've kicked to us approval for non-special education private schools. I don't think it's our purview. I don't think it's within our prerogative, and I don't think our staff should be having to spend their time and their energy doing this. I have a practical concern as well, which is while the guidelines issued by DESI purport to give us some limited immunity should things go wrong in the school once it's approved, and while the guidelines say, while the statute doesn't mention it, we can continue to periodically review the school for the same criteria that we're originally reviewing for approval and disapproval, I would submit to you, those have no force of law. They seem to have been made up of, out of whole cloth by DESI in the creation of this guidance, because nowhere does Section 1 talk about any limited immunity for a school committee. Once they've approved a school, a private school, should things head south? And nowhere does the statute talk at all about the committee having continuing authority to approve or review or disapprove of a public, of a private school once it's been approved under the section. So anytime a body or a person is tasked with approving something over which they will have no further governance or monitoring authority, all of our spider senses should be tingling, because it is putting you in an absolutely untenable situation, and the deep pockets in this are going to be the city. Because the city is acting by and through its school committee.
Or out of money.
We may be. But that is my concern. So the guidelines, to me, don't carry any weight. I'm not sure they'll carry much weight with a court, because quite frankly, they're a bureaucrat's interpretation of the statute. And if you have students who later argue, well, I only went to that school because the school committee of Marlboro gave it its imprimatur or its stamp of approval, I can, I can, I can see where that's an argument. You approved the school, I sent my kid there, and things went to hell in a handbasket there. Or conversely, what if there are going to be abutters or other residents who oppose the creation of the school? First party they're going to name in any sort of suit is going to be the city of Marlboro, including the school committee. Because but for our approval, that school would not be where, where it is. So I have a whole lot of trouble with this statute. I think it puts the city and the school committee and the members in a very untenable position. I don't think it is at all our purview to be doing this. So I'm going to abstain from this vote, and I'm going to abstain from any future votes that come before this committee for approval or disapproval of a private school.
Ms. Matthews.
I have a clarifying question to what you just said, though, and I don't know if Superintendent or Mr. Bergeron can answer this. My understanding of this policy coming forward was because of Crossroads, correct?
Because there is a specific school coming to Marlboro?
Okay, but that is a special education.
It is a private school.
But it's a special education private school.
Would you say it's...
Yeah. It's a special education.
Definitely.
Yeah. Okay, so, so what Mr.?
Is it totally? I'm not sure.
So what Mr. Walter just said, we don't need to approve this policy for that school. We have no oversight on a special education private...
Is there, um...
So I'm not sure, to your point, is, I don't want to say yes or no on a private school either. This is, we didn't do it.
I don't know what school is or isn't looking at Marlboro to move to all. I, I mean, regardless of whether it's special ed or not, I just, I have my objections to this, to this whole statute.
Well, no, but you brought up the point of that DESI has the oversight on special education.
In the guidelines, I believe it was a separate statutory site that DESI approves special ed, private schools.
And if we don't approve this tonight, what are the repercussions?
Well, I don't think that there are, I mean, at least I would say, I don't believe there are necessarily repercussions, because as we have all found out over whatever years that we've now been involved, there are a lot of things that are asked to become policies that don't for a good long time. And then there are policies that sit on the books that aren't necessarily followed. So, so, you know, as the chair of the policy committee, I would say, I don't feel this aching need that we must move this forward. I was trying to work with the superintendent, and what she had also been advised, that we needed to take into consideration to move forward due to this school coming into our community. That being the case, I will say what you just mentioned, Mr. Walter, and with the nature of the school, I don't see a reason that we have to push forward with this. And is there a reason that we can then let this sit within committee and we can look a little bit further? I think that would be fine.
And again, let me just clarify, I have no issue with the superintendent or the policy committee bringing this forward. My issue is with, is with the legislature and the statute.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So no offense taken.
And to Mr. Walter's point, too, I guess, I, Mr. Mayor, I would be concerned from the city's perspective of liability if, if there's, if this were to be approved and reflected as us saying we give a stamp of approval.
I, I don't disagree with any of that. We've been trying to, you know, they've approached the city about coming in. We've tried to work different agreements with them because we have students going there. They haven't been real receptive for that, but they don't have to be. So I guess, I, you know, Mr. Walter brought up some great points.
Yeah.
He's done that with a lot of experience when it comes to the law.
Yeah.
So I would just assume, have to go back to committee, take a look at a couple different things and see if we have some alternatives.
Just by, by way of reference, I cite two states that have good Samaritan laws. In the body of the statute, there is explicit hold harmless language for those who render aid, and it shields them from criminal and/or civil liability should they attempt to render aid but somehow make the situation worse, as long as it's not intentional. There's no such language. I, I take no comfort that the guidelines may say, oh, don't worry about it, you're only approving the school, you don't have any further, you know, liability if things go wrong at the school. How do we know that? A court, a court is going to look at the statute and say, where's the language in the statute that holds the school committee and the city harmless if something goes wrong? And the same with the language that asserts in the guidelines that we can, although, and it says specifically in there, although the statute is silent as to this issue, I'm paraphrasing, best practice or something is for the committee to periodically reevaluate the school. That is completely extrajudicial. That has been made up out of whole cloth by DESI. I can imagine an attorney salivating at the prospect of challenging that who represents a private school. And again, but I go back to the philosophically speaking, why should that be our burden?
Well...
That's not our bailiwick.
And, Mr. Walter, we actually had the discussion in our policy subcommittee about approval of the, a private school's curriculum and how it did seem out of our purview. So I think we took some issue with what was being asked as well. We even had a discussion about some of the private schools that are already currently here in Marlboro to understand, so how do you deal with something that has already been here? And we did find that that would be grandfathered in, but yet, to your point, it just seems really odd because...
The statute is silent on that as well.
Exactly. And it just, it, the whole thing is a little odd without all of your legal understanding that I don't have.
Okay, so, so we can put it back, but when it comes to the pathway school, which is coming regardless of what we talk about, Crossroads, sorry. That's a 766 school. It's a pri, it's a special education school, which is out of this realm anyways. So it's a moot point. So, so for clarification, we are not required, you are not required to adopt a policy, but yet for the school to come to Marlboro, it seeks approval, must have the approval of school committee. So there's a bit of a catch-22 in there, it would seem? So I think the thought of the committee was to make it...
Formal.
Formal, adopt the policy.
Correct.
Because we knew this was coming. And quite honestly, Ms. Geary and others have met with the directors of Crossroads School. I have a binder that I've looked at with all of their programs to, you know, evaluate the thoroughness and effectiveness of it. And I think we have it scheduled for the 23rd, the next meeting, so for them to come and seek approval. So I don't think we need the policy for the approval for the school to come to Marlboro.
But going back to the...
Which is a circular argument.
The difference between private school and private special education school, we don't need to grant them permission.
Right. And what if we say no?
They shouldn't be coming to us.
They're coming anyways.
Why do we?
As I, can I, I don't mean to interrupt.
Please.
So, under the guidelines, and I mark, I agree. It says, "By regulation, the department may not approve a private, a private school to serve publicly funded students with disabilities under the statute unless a private school has received approval from a local school committee pursuant to general law 76, Section 1," which Mr. Walters has been telling us about. So they actually do need local approval. The local approval can come in two ways. One, the local approval can literally go through it themselves and determine that they are saying who they are, their curriculum is robust and in the same ways, and it provides a public education. Or DESI can do it with our help. We send a representative to DESI, they do site visits and do the same amount of work, but you get DESI involved. You have two options. To, to make DESI get involved with it, I don't know. But it's the same level of work for us. So I don't mean to throw a monkey wrench in it, but when Crossroads come, they are going to be seeking approval from the committee, a vote of the committee to, to come into Marlboro, because they need to get this vote before they go to the state to officially change their location from NADIC to Marlboro.
Can you remind us how long they've been in NADIC?
I'm sorry, I don't know that.
2010.
Oh, thank you, Brian.
2010. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So we're assuming, because this was in 2007, this law came about, that NADIC approved them?
Yes, they had that letter from NADIC, which the committee approved it before they came to NADIC.
Okay. So we, we could find out if NADIC actually has a policy.
So, so why don't we do this? Okay, so why don't we, I will be more than happy to reach out to NADIC, to number one, see if they have a policy, and number two, to see if there is someone that maybe sits on the school committee that might have been there when the school was approved. That can give us a little bit of history, potentially, of what they went through, if you'd like. I'd be more than happy to go and see if I can contact them and see if we can have some information and insight before we get into the point of having them come forward.
I mean, ultimately, we'll have to do what is our statutory duty to do, but I certainly think we can take it upon ourselves to voice some displeasure with this statute, as currently written, at a minimum, to our, to our representatives. And I agree that the absence of a policy doesn't prevent a public school from still appearing essentially à la carte, I guess, and, and coming before us and having us vote yea or nay. But all I'm trying to highlight is that at least as currently written, it places, I think municipalities and committees in a very tenuous situation, but more and more important, it just isn't our job to do this, in my opinion.
On the motion to refer back to the policy committee.
No, nobody made that motion yet.
I heard it.
I'll make it.
Okay, you can make it.
Well, the other motion has to be removed. You have to withdraw the motion to approve.
Was there a motion to approve?
Yeah, because we were in discussion.
So we were in discussion. So I'd like to...
Motion to approve.
Yeah, I did.
So withdraw your motion and make a new motion.
I was just about ready to. So I'd like to make a motion to withdraw that previous motion and to now make a new motion for moving the private school policy back into the policy subcommittee.
Motion made and seconded to refer back to the policy committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Point of clarification.
Opposed? Carries?
A point of clarification for me, should they come, Crossroads, on the 23rd?
No.
Or not at all? Okay.
Unless the policy committee says they're ready to discuss it.
Okay.
After she has further information. Acceptance of donations and gifts. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Executive Office of, Office of Educational Skills. Manufacturing equipment at MHS in Hildreth, $239,000.
Suspend the rules for us to get this on the agenda?
No, we don't, because it's on the agenda. Donations and gifts. It's on the agenda. It just wasn't in the packet. Doesn't matter, it's on the agenda.
Okay. Motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Do we want to discuss? I think the superintendent would like to say something about it.
Sure, sure. This is late breaking, and we just found out yesterday about this. And part of the reason to accelerate this acceptance of donation is so that the money can be expended for equipment in FY '17 with the thought to extend and the opportunity to extend this grant in FY '18 and FY...
grant in FY '18 and FY '19. This is a grant that was given through the governor's office, through Executive Office of Education, for primarily technical schools as well as community colleges. I believe that we are the only one comprehensive high school that is in receipt of this, and this is for equipment to align the workforce needs with the labor market, to give our students some very high-level equipment around robotics, CNC mills, advanced manufacturing kinds of equipment for the high school and for the Hildreth School, to create some potential programs for them. And to hear more about this, as well as the other things that have been happening in STEM and STEAM this year, I've invited Mr. Riley to give a brief report on the 23rd of May.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Reports to committees? Any reports to committees? Seeing none, members' forum? Any members' forum, Ms. Bowden?
Thank you. I want to apprise the committee about our plans to do Superintendent Rulick's review. She'll be working on her end-of-cycle summit of evaluation and have it for us on the 23rd. So, it'll be in the packets on the 23rd. At that point in time, I will charge you all with-
Reading it.
Reading it, and doing your part of the evaluation process, and I'll provide forums if needed. Then, if you all can complete it by the June 13th meeting and get it back to me, I'll do the compilation, and we'll be able to report out her review on June 27th.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other reports? Ms. Senesi.
Well, not reports, members' forum, but I just wanted to say, unfortunately, I will not be able to be here at the next meeting. I need to be traveling with my son, so I just wanted to give everyone a heads up, so hopefully I can review the material and then get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Ms. Matthews.
I reviewed the warrant and signed it.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Pay the bills. Any further members? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries? Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.